Good afternoon. I will call to order our August 12, 2025, City Council meeting. I am your Mayor Brendan Kalfis. We will start off tonight with an invocation if Mr. Senior Warden Vince Walton would like to come to the podium. After that, we will do the flag salute. So everyone remain standing. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let us pray if you are willing and able. Loving and most merciful Creator, we come before you today with gratitude for the gift of this moment, this opportunity to gather and work together for the betterment of our city. Thank you for bringing together this diverse community, a trapezoid woven with the threads of different traditions, beliefs, and experiences. May we see this diversity as a strength, reminding us that we are all connected by our shared humanity. Thank you for the families that form the cornerstone of our lives, however they may look. Strengthen them with love, unity, and understanding. Let our community and its leaders commit to creating a city where every family can flourish. Guide this city council today, oh God, as they undertake the responsibilities entrusted to them. May wisdom and compassion fill their deliberations so that every decision made uplifts those they serve, especially the most vulnerable among us. Bless our community, its teachers, workers, caregivers, leaders, and every person, young and old. Help us to work together to build bridges of understanding and to foster a sense of belonging for everyone. May this city stand as a beacon of hope, where justice is pursued, kindness is abundant, and the dignity of all is upheld. May we leave this meeting inspired to be better neighbors, better leaders, better stewards of the world you have entrusted to us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Everyone will face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Mayor Kalfis?
Here.
Councilmember Ron is absent. Councilmember Schwenk?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
All right. We hope Councilmember Ron has a safe trip, and we'll see him soon. We will move on to our presentations. We have a certificate of recognition for Emergency Management Awareness Month. Madam City Clerk, can you read that certification?
Yes.
Is Michael here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Michael is here. We'll invite Michael up to the podium, and the main certificate is there on the podium. And we'll go ahead and read the certificate of recognition for Emergency Management Awareness Month. The City of Temecula recognizes August 2025 as the inaugural National Emergency Management Awareness Month. Emergency management helps communities and organizations prepare, respond, recover, and adapt while making sure that operations and critical services are not interrupted by disaster. Emergency Management Awareness Month aims to support planning in advance and bringing partners together to solve complex problems, reduce harm, and restore stability during emergencies. The City of Temecula proudly recognizes Emergency Management Awareness Month and encourages all to participate in related activities and events. And because this is an internal presentation, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for any further comments.
All right. We would love to hear from you, sir.
The pressure's on. The pressure's on. Well, I'll keep it very short. I know you guys have got a busy schedule. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for allowing me to be this city's emergency manager, and also for allowing me the latitude to build this vision of a disaster-ready and disaster-resilient Temecula. So, thank you. I look forward to many more years.
Well, thank you very much. I don't have my microphone here, but we appreciate it. This sounds like this is the first... Oh, it's okay. I got it right here. I'll just speak this way. It sounds like this is the first month this has happened. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is the first time the International Association of Emergency Managers has brought national emergency management awareness out, and they felt it was good to kind of kick-start the preparedness cycle with September being National Preparedness Month. So we'd start with emergency management, finish off with national preparedness, and kick it off with a great smile.
Well, we are very grateful for everything you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you again.
We'll move right on to our Board and Commission reports. We have our Community Service Commissioner, Mrs. Hox. Hello.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Dr. Ewan Hox. I'm honored to serve as the Chairwoman of this commission with four exceptional commissioners, and we have one of them right here with us today, Commissioner Kingsburg. Our most recent meeting was held less than 24 hours ago. That means my report is hot off the press. Next, please. First, we received reports from the Human Services Division. For inclusive services, we had almost 3,000 participants in July. Most of it was from the summer food service program. However, the number was 10% lower compared to the same month last year. It might be due to the closure of the splash pad. For senior services, we had over 500 participants, which was a 500% increase from the same month last year, mainly resulting from the increased use of COO Center with over 300 participants. Next, please. I'm very happy to report that the Temecula Valley Museum is going strong with over 3,000 participants in July, which was a 30% increase from the same month last year. It could be the combination of the new exhibit, the perfect shot, Culture Day Celebration of Kenya, and the sister city visit from Japan. Next, please. Lastly, to recap our meeting, I want to emphasize that our commissioners really appreciated the time and the effort the council took to have a conversation with us at the workshop. We felt we were heard, and we sincerely hope that the council will consider our feedback moving forward. We truly appreciate the opportunity the council gave us to serve our community. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Thank you very much. We'll move on to our public safety report. We have our Chief of Police, Captain Regali.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, members of the public. Good afternoon. Certainly a pleasure to be with you here this afternoon. I have some stats for you, and then have some additional information to share with you towards the end of our presentation concerning our robbery/burglary suppression team and a success story I wanted to share with everybody. But starting off in the slide in front of you here, July did not disappoint. We were very busy in the month of July. Everybody out of school and a lot of visitors into the city. I see that we had a total number of calls for service at just over 5,400. And there in the table, you see the priorities, 1 through 4. Moving left to right, June, we had a six-minute response time for Priority 1 calls. That dipped just below that to 5.73 minutes, which is good. I always like to see that number trending down. Not as good as May, but still a very good response time. Next slide. I wanted to break this down again, the Priority 1 calls. You see that our Priority 1, right, again, emergency calls, smallest number, 1%, 69 total calls. Priority 3s and 4s are the bulk, just over 3,300 calls for service. There, and then Priority 2 calls at 37%. Next slide. So this is the breakdown of just Priority 1 calls. Typically, when I've presented this to you, you've seen that juvenile medical aids is the top number. It was replaced by robbery. I'm sure, as you look at that, you probably share the same sentiment as I did when I saw that. That was kind of troubling at first. I thought, well, how did we end up with 17 robberies? And that's not exactly the case. So digging into that a little bit, I wanted to provide you some context for that. Of these 17 calls, 16 of them were silent robbery alarm calls to businesses within the city, and that was either faulty equipment that activated, or they were just human error that they actually tripped the alarm that we responded to, and that they were all ended up being false alarms. So no crimes there. We did have one that was actually a valid robbery, more of a shoplifting turned to robbery. Individual who went into a CVS stealing alcohol fought with security to complete the crime over an alcohol bottle, and he was ended up being arrested for robbery. So when you see that number kind of eye-popping at first when you drill down to it, again, Temecula, very, very safe city, and 16 of these were just robbery calls that were false alarms. Any questions on the stats presented?
One question here for you.
Yes, sir.
So what's juvenile med? What's that?
So the juvenile medical aid is calls for service where somebody has called 911, and there is a juvenile who's in some sort of medical distress. Fire, typically, fire will be dispatched at the same time as law enforcement, and really just who can get to the home fastest to provide assistance. And it could be anything from... We get a lot of trips and falls, kids who ingest things, anything that, again, requiring immediate medical attention, and we will respond to those along with fire. Assist other department, and that could just be another agency, whether it's fire or another law enforcement agency that's in our area, that says, hey, we have an emergency situation going here. We could use some help. And we respond in that Code 3 capacity to get to them. Okay, so, next slide, please. Again, I wanted to highlight this case. When I first became aware of this, obviously, any burglary is bad. Nighttime burglaries are especially bad. They're things that cause me alarm. And so we're dedicated to, obviously, fully investigating any burglary, but when we see a series occurring within the city where the suspects are actually perpetrating these crimes at nighttime when we can and expect that people are home, obviously, that's of greater concern to us because of the propensity to have something violent happen in that space. So we really leaned on our robbery/burglary suppression team to solve this. So I'd like to read through this for you. But in January of 2025, the robbery/burglary suppression team was assigned to investigate a series of residential burglaries in the Temecula area. These incidents involved unknown suspects entering the backyards of homes, forcing entry through rear glass sliders, and stealing property from within. Next slide, please. Through diligent investigative work, RBST conducted a neighborhood canvas and utilized multiple investigative tools, including automated license plate readers, ALPR technology, to identify a vehicle suspected of being involved in each of the burglaries. Investigators coordinated with multiple agencies to track the vehicle's movements and secure search warrants for further evidence. Key investigative steps included that the team conducted reviewing and analyzing surveillance footage from affected neighborhoods and local businesses, conducting multi-location ALPR searches to identify the suspect vehicle patterns, securing and processing the suspect vehicle for forensic evidence, downloading and analyzing onboard vehicle infotainment data, which revealed key travel patterns and the devices that were connected to that car while it was moving, serving search warrants to obtain device owner information and corresponding phone records as well. Next slide. Tracking suspect movements through cellphone data and deploying vehicle trackers for ongoing monitoring. We want to monitor our suspects for an extended period of time to see where they're going and who they're hanging out with. Also coordinating with outside law enforcement agencies for surveillance, vehicle stops, and suspect identification, serving residential search warrants that resulted in the recovery of evidence directly linking the suspects to the crimes committed in the City of Temecula. Next slide, please. This multi-month investigation resulted in the identification and arrest of three suspects. Total of 25 search warrants were obtained over the course of the case, demonstrating the persistence and thoroughness of the investigative team. Court case remains ongoing with a felony settlement conference scheduled later this year. The successful outcome of this case was made possible through the collaboration with several sheriff's special teams, the Southwest Station Special Enforcement Team, K-9 units, aviation support, and outside law enforcement agencies. The professionalism, skill, and determination of the RBST was instrumental in bringing these suspects into custody and preventing further crimes in our community. And so I will just say again, we certainly thank the council for your ongoing support, not just for our personnel needs, but for allowing us the technology we need in order to be good at our jobs. And we benefit from that. The community benefits from that, and we thank you again for your continued support in this effort. It's important for us to demonstrate when these crimes happen, because they will happen, that we have both the willingness and the ability and the technology to respond accordingly and hold people accountable for their criminal conduct, and we will do just that. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Captain. We are very fortunate to be able to support you. So thank you for all that you do. Anything for my colleagues? Councilmember Schwenk?
Thank you. You know, when we approve these investments, this is exactly what we have in mind. And so there's got to be some way, maybe we put a billboard up and say, hey, let this be a lesson to you. Don't come to Temecula, because that's clearly... I mean, the amount of time and effort, energy you put into making that arrest, that's fantastic.
And that's an excellent point, sir. And like any community, you know, criminals, they all communicate with each other as well, and really, that is the goal, is that through their weird community that they, you know, run through, that the message is, hey, there are easier places to go commit crimes than Temecula. If you go down there, what you can and should anticipate from the sheriff's office is a robust response investigative effort, followed with a district attorney's office that is not shy about prosecuting people. And that is the key to Riverside's success, and will continue to be so, is that is a... we are not in conflict with one another. We work collaboratively on that and hold people accountable. So, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Absolutely.
All right. Moving on to public comments, non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We do have four public comments on non-agendas items, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. And our first speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Susan Witten.
Welcome, Ms. Lamont.
Hi. All right. So this morning at 9:00 AM, the city inspectors came to Warehouse at Creekside to inspect the dryer ventilation. So thank you, Brendan Kalfis, for asking the city to look into this issue. I'm... Via this morning's meeting, I will get dryer ventilation put in, and my dryer won't be venting into a bucket of water into the apartment. So I want to thank Carlos Torado and Randy Wood for coming out. Carlos Torado is just a lovely human and is very pleasant to speak to and deal with. I want to say that the city, Randy and Zach, have said that nobody's ever complained, so they just didn't even know. I know that they weren't here when the building was built. They are not responsible for the lack of inspection, and therefore, it doesn't fall on them, per se. So how could they have known? I want to address that. There was a tenant in that unit for 10 years before me, and that building was built in 2010, so obviously, a tenant before that. And that tenant did complain. But most people don't understand municipal governance, local municipal governments, much less higher up. So how was that tenant supposed to know that they were supposed to come to the city? They complained many, many, many times to the onsite manager and to the property management, and nothing was done. That same property management company installed faulty windows that we had to replace twice. That same property management company is dealing with these tenants inappropriately, and we are allowing them to continue to function with the best interest of these tenants. You know, when you work, there's all these HR, all these numbers you can call when you go to work, like if you're feeling harassed, or, you know, there's a place you can go. Maybe we should start putting on a bulletin board at all the affordable housing. This is the chain of command if you feel like you are not being treated fairly or not being addressed accurately and fairly. Thank you for coming out and meeting the tenants, Brendan Kalfis. I hope that you come back again and meet with the collective of them and have more time to sit down and hear everybody's concerns. This is to be continued. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Susan Witten, to be followed by Ann Pulsifer.
Yes, I'm back. The flower lady.
Welcome back.
I am the president of Temecula Valley Rose Society and the Rose Haven Heritage Garden that you all know and love and have heard from us for many, many times. At our last session, another board member, Scott Rieger, came and shared with you the upcoming celebration of our 35th anniversary of our presence in Temecula, which will kick off in October of 2026, the 16th, 17th, and 18th of October, with multiple events that will be going on. So put it on your calendars. I know it's early, but never too early. More information will come, and you're all invited. But I'm here today to express our thanks to the collaboration with the city, the city council members, and department managers of the City of Temecula, who, over the 34 years of our presence, have supported a nonprofit organization like ours, and you continue to support other nonprofit organizations within the city who serve the city. We have received grants for improvements over the years. We'll continue to bring forward requests for grants when we have projects that serve the good of the community. Most recently, we had a walkabout with engineer Annie Bostrey Lee, project work Stormwater Manager, what a title, and other her engineer, Ryan Castello, who both provided us with confirmation of our current erosion and soil conservation methods that have been instituted in our pollinator garden, which is at the very top of the garden. So we collect the rainwater, the runoff, the dew, and the mist that come, that then we're able to support and water other plants within the garden, which then cuts down on water or helps with water control. They also gave us ideas for our upcoming redesign of the Southwest Succulent and Cactus Garden for areas of erosion that come down our hillside. They introduced us to the Mulch and Compost Program, which will save us thousands of dollars over the next 35 years of our presence in the community. We are grateful for your support and look forward to continuing this positive relationship and we continue, as we continue to enhance our garden for future generations. But I just want to take a moment to recognize the Chief of Police and the report that you gave. With all the criticism that is happening around the United States about cities, this city is well-run, obviously well-managed, and looked after, and I think it should give every citizen that lives in the City of Temecula and the surrounding areas confidence that we are being well-managed. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You might have forgot your flowers there if you want to take them with you, or we'll keep them if you don't want them.
But I'd have to come back for my vase.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Ann Pulsifer, to be followed by our last speaker, Eric McKillian.
Yep, if you lift it right up, you got to, yeah, put the whole post up. Not the paper, the actual... Yep. And there should be... See if it pops up. There might be a button on top to turn it on, too. See if you can beat our help that's coming behind you. Five, four, three, two...
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Pulsifer, and my husband and I have lived here in Temecula for 25 years, and we are so happy to call Temecula home, and we were lucky enough to raise our children here. But today, I come to you as the Communication Director from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and we are hosting a first responders appreciation breakfast. I was thrilled to hear Captain Regali's report today, and amazing, 5,400, I think, calls in July. Our first responders work hard. Our firefighters work hard, and our emergency medical personnel work hard, and they put their lives in harm's way every day to protect us and make Temecula a great city that we all enjoy. So we will be having a appreciation breakfast on Saturday, September 13, at our church on Paba Road, and we would be honored if each of you on the dais would join us. I know our mayor will be there, and many others, but we want to really appreciate our first responders. Our youth will be serving the breakfast to show their gratitude, and the high school ROTC will be participating in a flag ceremony. So I gave flyers before you sat down to pass, distribute, and we would love it if each of you could join us and all the community and family. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it's important to note, too, that me and Ann's sons went to high school together, and her son was the star quarterback at TVHS my high school graduating year. Go Bears! All right. Madam City Clerk, any other public comments?
Yes. Our last speaker is Eric McKillian.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, proterm, Ms. Alexander's. Nice to meet you again. Donald, or Mr. Moreau, good to meet you again. My name is Dr. Eric McKilliken. I'm a resident in Temecula, as well as with my wife, Dr. Jennifer Rosenberg. We both practice here in Temecula as well. My... I'm not sure if I'm in the right agenda meeting part of it, but I'm here to address the general plan update, and specifically, the widening of Yenez and Deportola. And so I'll just take a couple of minutes, and we'll be done. I'd like to just start with the number 67. I drove Yenez to Deportola just past my house the other day, and I counted 67 driveways having direct access to both of the Yenez-Deportola pathway. 67 direct entries. And if we were to engineer that neighborhood today, I think the number would be zero. The issue is its safety because of speed. It wasn't but two years ago, about 10:30 in the morning, where a driver who was not intoxicated took out our iron fence and about 40 feet of fence line. On the inside of that fence line is our vegetable garden and our fruit tree orchard. Typically, my mother-in-law's in there working on a regular basis, many times with our grandchildren. And so safety is a big concern for us in that we just happened to be out of town that day. Nobody was in the garden when they took that out. We have horses on property, which means we have trailers on property, and driving and maneuvering in and out of our driveways is a big concern. I have a trailer that is long enough that I can't just take a right-hand turn from the drive lane. I have to move into the center lane to move a turn right-hand into our driveway. It is not uncommon that cars come flying by on the bike lane between me and our driveway to pass us, so they don't want to wait for us to turn while we turn right into our driveway. When we turn left into our driveway, we block traffic, and it is not uncommon that cars who are upset with us blast their horns as we're finally turning, waiting for other traffic to go by. So I just wanted to bring that up to you. I know that you guys are reissue, or you're looking at this general plan, and I'd like to ask you to please remove the widening of Yenez. Thank you very much, and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, was that the last public comment on non-agenda items?
That was, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will move on to our city council reports. Councilmember Stu.
All right. I think I have a slide. Okay, so not tomorrow. Thursday is the last of the summer concert series, and it is a Journey tribute band. It's basically the same band that we've had every year. They're incredibly good, and it should be an incredibly beautiful night to come out and enjoy the Sunset Market and a summer concert here in Old Town. So please come down and enjoy it with the rest of Temecula, and I'm sure most will be here. here.
I'll be there. It sounds like a great show. Councilmember Schwank.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a slide and then a couple of brief comments. So I wanted to highlight and recap our summer food service program, and we received an update last night from our city manager, and it was a great one, so I'm gonna take the liberty and read your sort of recap of it, because I thought it just summed up everything perfectly. So the summer food service program season at Michael Mike Niggar Community Park concluded on August 8th, and this summer we served a total of 7,220 nutritious meals to participants, including youth ages 18 and under, young adults with disabilities as well. And even though the splash pad was closed, attendance remained strong, and the community stayed engaged, which is a testament to the dedication of the volunteers, staff, partners, and families. And then finally, on August 7th, we hosted, in partnership with Temecula's Employee Wellness Committee, I really want to thank the Wellness Committee for this. They did a back-to-school event, and they offered free school supplies for 275 children. And from what I understand, our aquatics team, some of the part-time project staff, like the lifeguards, the youth lifeguards, the younger, young adult lifeguards, they put together over 100 bags themselves. So just like a huge thank you to those folks. And so while it was bittersweet to see this program come to an end for this year, we'd like to extend our deepest gratitude to everyone who contributed to a successful and nutritious summer for our community, and we look forward to hosting that again next year. It's a wonderful program, and it's really a great way to connect with our community. So I wanted to say thanks and highlight that. And thanks for the words, Mr. City Manager. Last meeting, we had a gentleman come in and made a public comment about like water running on his street for like four days. If you were here, he was very upset, he was very fired up. After the meeting, I gave him a call, drove out to his house, and as I was driving out there, I'm thinking like, gosh, this is weird, like there's gotta be a water main break or something, you know, like what's going on? Turns out, someone was draining their pool into the backyard, which then flowed into sort of like a common area drain, and then down, you know, a few blocks to this gentleman's house, and then kind of out almost to like Winchester Road and Willow's Road. It also turns out that the home was in Marietta. So this gentleman lives right near the border, so I told him to go yell at the folks in Marietta. No, but it was an interesting conversation, and he was very thankful that we came out. Public Works went out and checked, and we checked with the homeowner, and, you know, sometimes people do crazy things, and people drain their pools into the street, I guess. We don't have a pool, so I don't know how that works, but I thought I would just sort of like highlight that and thank our Public Works team for going out there and checking on it and making sure there wasn't anything like broken in the street, right? So, and then finally, a couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity to have a meeting with the leadership for Lake Elsinore Storm, and I wanted to thank them for the partnership that we have. We do like these storm days, and we've done them for a few years. RTA does one as well. They're like really sort of invested in the community, and they partner with us on these days. They also partner with like local businesses, so I don't know if you saw the swing in, like the Breaking Bats bobblehead, which they did. But they came with bobbleheads for each council member, so you all should have a bobblehead. And then they did their jerseys, and they did, they brought some game-worn jerseys for us, and they had the players autograph them. So these are upstairs, so maybe pick the least stinky one, if you will, because they are game worn. But I just wanted to thank the Storm for their, like their community involvement. They're really, if you really look at, not just the leadership, but the ownership of the Storm and how they give back to the community, they're really an integral part of like this part of our region. And while they're not in Temecula, we certainly enjoy partnering with them and look forward to many more future years of success and partnership with the Storm. So I just wanted to thank them. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro-Tem Alexander.
All righty, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, so before I, as we're looking at this slide, I just want to read a couple of different stats here specifically. Why we care about mental health, this is directly from Care Solis, who we partner with. One in five adults experience mental health each year, so one in five. One in six youth aged 6 to 17 experience a mental health disorder each year. One in five children are diagnosed with behavioral health issues, and 80% won't get the care they need. Last one, when individuals navigate the mental health care system on their own due to barriers in the system, approximately 18% only of those individuals will actually get an appointment. So I don't know how many of you actually know, but we have Care Solis, who we partner with, we work with. It's about $2.50 per resident here, and that's cut in half because also the Unified School District also has this program there, so it's even, it's actually even less. We just extended this contract out for six months, and I just want to give an update for the July report that I just received. So up to year of date, we have now helped 31,216 Temeculans. Again, 31,216 individuals received the mental behavior health care that they needed. Just for July alone, approximately 2,800, just in July. So when an individual tries to navigate the system, they find a lot of challenges. Typically, they are calling at least or plus 30-plus different therapists or counselors to be able to try to find an appointment and a right fit for them. So that's why a lot of people actually don't end up getting an appointment, because they kind of give up. Care Solis will connect somebody within anywhere from 24 to 72 hours to a provider. And it's a wonderful tool for our residents, our businesses, and our nonprofits here within our city. So I want to encourage anybody who is needing help either with mental health or substance abuse, please get onto our website, look at Care Solis. You can even have a mental health behavior specialist right there to navigate and advocate through the process to find somebody. Or you can even go online yourself and start taking a look, but you can categorize the fit that you're needing specifically for your specific needs, and it's been a great program. So I just want to thank again the council for allowing this to continue for right now, as it's been a great tool. Also, two more things. I just want to thank the Ready Commission and the Community Services Commission for coming out and sharing their hearts and everything that has been going on. It's been very, very helpful, and to see that people are still keeping their backpacks on and still marching through, it's an inspiration. So I just want to thank you, because all of your voices matter to us, and so I look forward to continuing to keep this dialogue open and seeing how we can continue to improve Temecula together. Last thing, as Councilmember Zach Schwank had put on a picture that we both at a beautiful park, I came into some really neat information that I think needs to be shared. And one of the things that was really neat is I'd like the city manager to just explain a little bit more about how the Employee Wellness Committee, what ended up happening to get this funding, because I think sometimes people think it comes from tax dollars, and if you can give a little bit of sharing about that, I think it'd be really encouraging for our community. Thank you.
Sure, happy to. So, you know, we have a little over 200 full-time benefited employees. We have, you know, a number over 100, you know, seasonal project employees, and we have a group of individuals, employees, that make up what we call the Employee Wellness Program, and they meet on their own time to discover and identify ways to give back, to challenge city employees, you know, whether it be through health, nutrition, doing good work, giving back to the community, things of that nature. In this particular case, our Wellness Committee of employees came up with the idea that we really should help those less fortunate in their back-to-school preparation and plans, and so they took it upon themselves to fundraise basically inside and outside City Hall with all employees, employee base. They did an amazing job putting together the dollars and then purchasing all the school supplies that were then handed over to folks at Mike Niggar Park, and they were distributed last week, as you saw on the slide. So, big shout out to the City of Temecula Employee Wellness Program for doing so much good. They did a great job, I agree.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, City Manager, and that was something actually that I just learned about. So I was just really thrilled to be able to push that encouragement out that, you know, the employees here are all about this city. Our employees here want the best for this city. Not only do they live here, they work here, we're a family, and so I just wanted to put that out and say thank you to all of you who did such a great job. Thank you for coming out. Thank you to the families for entrusting us enough with your kids to be able to just reach out and help out. So it was, it was a blessing to be out with Zach and see all the kids and having fun, and his son is amazing. He had a really good time serving, too, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. All right, I have a couple of slides here, more than normal, since Mr. Ron has gone, so I thought I'd fill in his place and add a few more slides. I will start off with the Samantha fire. I just wanted to thank our chief of police, as well of our fire chief, for being out there. The Samantha fire happened, I'm sure you saw, last week. It was just north of Pachanga Parkway, right on the backside of a local church here, and Cal Fire sent 16 fire engines out there, and we had a bunch of RSO Riverside Sheriff's Office resources out there as well. They were helping evacuations from the church, because there were a school going on in there. There was a lot of chaos, but I just want to thank you for, you know, the evacuations, the structure protection that our fire department supplied, as well as keeping the loss to a minimum. You guys do a phenomenal job, and I also wanted to shout out to our PIO, Betsy up there, for taking this photo, taking the video that was shown to our Temecula residents to keep them informed. A great job all around, and we are extremely appreciative of our Riverside Sheriff's Office, as well as our Cal Fire firefighters. So thank you very much. Oh, I do want to hit on this tie you see, create the mayor's tie. This one is for, or is created by a 10-year-old boy named Ari, and this green and black, those are some ladybugs, it kind of got smeared. But you'll see me in a cool, unique, created tie by one of our local community members here at the rest of our city council meetings this year. So thank you, Ari, for this special tie. We can go back to the slides here. I want to give a special shout out to Public Works. The sign in the top left, the Kent Hindergaard sign, that is one of our sheriff's officers that lost his life in Temecula, and the daughter actually wrote me on social media, and she said, hey, you know, the sign's kind of fading, I would love if the city of Temecula was able to fix it up, and our Public Works team got right on it, which is pretty awesome. And it was within one day that they were able to paint that and refurbish it, and she was extremely happy. So thank you to our Public Works. And the bottom right one, another instance where a community member reached out and they said that curb at Vale Elementary, a lot of the kids were tripping on, because they couldn't see it. And I asked Public Works Department if I was able to come out and help paint it. So I went out there, so thank you for taking the time to let me help paint it. That was pretty awesome. Our Public Works team is on it, and we are extremely grateful for everything you guys do. Next slide, please. And I want to touch on the MRC Summer Food Program as well. Like my colleague said, what a fabulous program. You know, I talked to staff a couple of days before, and like our Community Service Commissioner mentioned, this, the amount of kids that have been there this year has been more than 10%, and I would attest that to the closure and the out-of-service our splash pad. But I thought this was a great opportunity for my kids to know that they are not better than any other kid, and no kid is less than them. You know, I had a family come up to my wife at the, at the food program and tell her how awesome it was for their kids to see the mayor's kids, you know, getting food and getting school supplies, just like every other kid. And I thought, man, this is a great opportunity to show, especially my kids, that you are not better than anyone, and no one is less than you. So I was extremely grateful to our Temecula employees for donating those supplies, for doing the food program. It was the last day of swim lessons for my kids, too, so they were extremely ecstatic. And you can see the line out there, it was pretty, pretty long, and it was hot. And luckily for the kids, there was about 30 to 40 extra school supply bags, so all the kids at the MRC Summer Camp were able to be gifted those school supplies, too, even though if they would, you know, they may not need it, hopefully they share it with their siblings. I also noticed that this was a great opportunity to meet people where they are. Next slide, please. So with this, you know, when we were out there and my kids got the school supplies, and they were able to mingle and be a part of the community, I thought this was a great opportunity to re-gift all the school supplies and lunches to other families in need that weren't able to make the program, because it's important to know that, one, a lot of people don't even know that program exists, and, two, families, a lot, weren't even able to make it there. So this was the first family that we gave school supplies, and we bought a bunch of Chick-fil-A for them. This is Lily, she is an amazing, a community member here. She was actually diagnosed with leukemia for her fifth time, and she is only seven years old. The family was nice enough to let us come over to the house, so we hung out with them. Our kids were just kids, my daughter Madeline there, the five-year-old, was riding around on Lily, and they were just having the best time. It was the greatest time. So that was the first family that we re-gifted all of the gifts to and brought lunch to. Next slide, please. The next couple of families here, the top-left one there is a family that we met in the apartments here in Old Town, such a great family, grew up here, actually went to Temecula Valley High School, too. They were unaware that the event even took place, so we went out to those apartments, and we took the time to meet with many different residents. And again, the school supplies that our generous Temecula employees donated were a part of this. We just included extra backpacks and school pencils, notebooks, all of that, and these families were extremely grateful, and we were fortunate to be in a position to do that. The last family there on the right, those, that family is such an amazing family here in Temecula. They have three autistic boys. In a scene like that at the MRC where it's hot out and there's over 250 individuals, you know, it's called sensory overload. So these kids, they're not able to participate in daily activities, just like every other kid, and so what we wanted to do is we wanted to go to a place that was familiar and comfortable to them. So we went to their house, we re-gifted all the school supplies, as well as more and food to go along with it. So it was just a great time, and really, this, this event was about meeting people where they are and showing us, and showing the community that that's what we're here for. We are here to give, we are here to be a community, and even if you can't make that event, we want to come to you and ensure that you have what you need to succeed. And that's what it's all about. Next slide, please. And with that, we don't stop there. We are gonna do, I'm partnering with Rancho California Barber Shop, right here by the Target Shopping Center on August 17th, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The barbers there said they will stay longer if there's a long line. We are gonna do free haircuts, free school supplies, there will be free food, free drinks, all for the community. So pretty amazing for them to do that and put that together. We are excited to see that happen. So again, this is, this is what it's all about. It's all about giving to those that need it and being there and being a community. And I want people to know that, you know, events like the, like the summer food program and the, the school supplies, a lot of times in the low-income community, there's a stigma, where a lot of families won't even go because they don't want to be seen as less than. And I thought it was important, and I'm so happy, my wife, you know, was given a comment that she was given, because those kids out there that may need school supplies and need those food, they are not less than. They are not less than, and my kids are no better than they are. And it was such a great learning opportunity for my children to see that and to be involved in the community and get to know kids that they might not have seen before. So that's what it's all about, and I was happy that we were able to do that. And I do have one more slide here, I believe it is my reel, if it's up there. If not, we'll, there it is. And also the, wow, that was quick, thanks. Oh, I forgot the, wow, you guys rock. I am doing my First Coffee with the Mayor event, August 20th at 9:00 a.m. at The Little Goat, so I hope to see you there. Partnering with me is city manager Aaron Adams, so we cannot wait to see you there, and we can discuss all things that you want to discuss. We'll be there for an hour. I know our city manager has lots of meetings that day, so he will take off, but if you need more time than the hour, I will stick around and talk about everything you want. So look forward to many more Coffee with the Mayors. And lastly, it's not on a slide, but similar to the sign being painted and the curb being painted, these things come to us via an active and engaged community. And you have to be active and engaged for us to know what we need to fix. And I do want to do a shout out to Ms. Lamont, who's in the crowd today. You know, she's come here for years, and she has gotten a lot of things fixed, and I want to just highlight a few of them. There were parking fees that were refunded to the low-income housing apartment there at Warehouse at Creekside that she came and notified the city about. There were cable fees that were removed from their utility bills that she came and notified the city about, and she got the replacement of all the south-facing windows due to excessive noise on that low-income apartment complex fixed and changed out for higher dual-pane windows to help with the noise. And that is what it takes. It takes an active and involved and engaged community to let us know what needs to be fixed, because without you, we don't have eyes everywhere, and we may not know what the community needs. So I encourage everyone out there today to stay engaged, come to city council meetings, let us know, send us emails. We are here to help you, we are here to fix issues that will make your life better. So thank you for everyone that continues to email us, continues to show up to city council meetings. We need to hear from you. Thank you very much. That was all I have. It was very short. We'll move on to our consent calendar here. Item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item number two, approve action minutes of July 2020, 22nd, 2025, and August 5th, 2025. Item number three, approve list of demands. 2025, and August 5th, 2025. Item number three, approve list of demands. Item number four, adopt ordinance number 2025-12, amending titles 5, 8, 16, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code related to minor revisions to business license requirements, nuisance abatement, alcohol, or entertainment conditional use permits, accessory structures and setbacks, bicycle parking requirements, barber beauty shops, energy storage standards, and raceways for signage. Second reading. Item number five, adopt resolution approving the funding agreement for removal of debris materials with Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. Item number six, approve design cooperative agreement with the State of California Department of Transportation for I-15 French Valley Parkway improvements, Phase II highway planting, PW 16-01. Item number seven, approve second amendment to the agreement with TK Consulting, Inc., for the Yenez Road improvements, Phase I project, PW 23-02. Item number eight, approve track map 369592 for SB Alter LLC project to include the naming of Puesca Mountain Parkway located in the southwest portion of Old Town Temecula. Attach, oh, sorry. Number nine, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the sidewalk, citywide Yenez Road, Rancho Highland Drive to Tierra Vista, PW 1728. Item number 10, receive and file temporary street closures for 2025 fall events. With that, that is the end of our consent calendar. Any my colleagues want to pull or comment on any polling of item number two for discussion?
No, no, no. I'd like to pull two, like, not number two, but two items. Sorry about that. I'd like to just get a staff report on number five, please, and just a staff report on number nine about the widening of Yenez Place as well.
Staff report on five and nine. We will vote on the balance prior to, and we will have a staff-
Put a yes on all of them, just a staff report.
Copy that. Yeah, absolutely. All right. What we'll do is we will vote on the balance of them to include five and nine, and just have a brief staff report on items five and nine.
Second?
That has been motion and second. And that passes four to zero. All right. Maybe we have a staff report on, first off, number five.
Yeah, I'll take item five. So, going back to December of 2022, that was really the first time that we've actually entered into an agreement between the City of Temecula and Riverside County Flood. What this basically cooperative agreement allows us to do is it expedites the cleanup of homeless encampment, trash, debris, things that are in the waterways along Temecula Creek, as well as Marietta Creek. As everyone knows, here, we don't own those properties. Those, those two waterways are owned and maintained by Riverside County Flood. However, we believe that we are more efficient in sort of cleaning up those respective waterways than waiting for them to show up. So, again, about three or four years ago, we entered into a cooperative agreement where they agree to reimburse us up to a certain amount of money. This particular agreement on consent, they will reimburse us up to $100,000 a year. It's a multi-year agreement. It also allows us to just move quickly. When we see something, we can do the proper noticing, legal noticing. We can deploy our troops. We can go in there with our homeless outreach team, with RSO, and we can effectively and humanely and safely clean up these encampments in those waterways and put them back to, to natural order. So, let me know. That closes, you know, everything that I can ask. If I can answer any questions, let me know.
No, thank you, City Manager. I just wanted to highlight this, this one especially, just in the good work that's being done, that we did need to increase from $75,000 to $100,000. And it's a good thing, because this is really going to improve the quality of life here in Temecula, and also decrease, obviously, with wildfires and different things like that, that we'll just be able to, you know, just have, again, a better quality of life, a lot safer. So, I just appreciate staff's ability to just get this moving, and just to continue to keep our, our city safe. So, and then-
With respect to item nine?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll have Ron Moreno kind of cover that. And I'll just, I'll just preface it by saying, we heard the speaker this evening talk about the concern over widening Yenez, and every time Yenez is on the agenda, we, it seems to flag things. And so, important to note, this does not involve that section of Yenez or widening of Yenez. So, Ron can give you kind of a quick account of that.
Yeah, if, if number nine is indeed the one you pulled, this, this was the sidewalk, kind of identified area that had a gap in sidewalk on the west side of Yenez. So, on the west side of Yenez, there was a gap that was going from Tierra Vista all the way to Highland Drive. And so, city staff took on that project under the citywide sidewalk plan, and installed the sidewalk, worked with the HOA on that side. Some trees needed to be removed, but the notice of completion is for that. There's another project that's coming in and replacing that, some of that landscaping that was impacted, and that'll be done through a separate project. But for this, the city, as far as the sidewalk goes, it was completed.
And this has been, this has taken a little while, but we're finally kind of getting to the, it's been a couple of years, right?
Yeah, it was some work with the, with the Property Owners Association to come up with a reasonable, because they had had those trees in front of there for quite some time, and they were sad to see them go. We had to work with them on a pallet. We had to work with them on views and security and such, because they had been such a staple there. But in order to get the sidewalk, they had to be removed. And so, it, it was a little while, but it is now complete, as far as the sidewalk goes.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, I just, thank you to the City Manager and Mr. Ron Moreno. I just wanted to, again, highlight these things. Sometimes they're on consent, and they don't get spoken about. And I think these especially are two that are very important, especially being in my district, for Yenez. So, I just want to encourage everybody, that area in Rancho, where is it? I'm just, I just forgot the name of it. Rancho?
Vista?
Where is it? Rancho, oh my goodness, I just forgot the name of Rancho.
Highlands.
No, it was another area for, anyways, we're not there yet for the, for that area that we're going to be widening that. I apologize. I just had a brain dump at that moment, but
Oh, the widening of- Yeah, Rancho Vista to Tierra Vista, in front of the Rancho Highlands Development.
Yes, exactly. I appreciate too many ranchos. So, yes, so, we're not there yet, but I, I'm, thank you for, for pushing this out and just letting people know exactly what's going on and where it needs to. So, thank you.
All right. We will recess our city council meeting to our Temecula Community Services District meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll call our Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please note that we are all still here with the noted absence of Director Ron. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay. We'll move to our consent calendar. We have one item. Item 11 is approve action minutes of July 22nd, 2025. I'll entertain a motion in a second. Okay, let us vote. Okay, that passes four to zero. Thank you very much. We'll now move to our business calendar. We have item 12, which is Discussion of Portable Restroom Rentals and Services at the, at city parks at the request of myself and Councilmember Stewart. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So, as a result of some feedback that we've all received regarding restrooms, or maybe a lack of restrooms in some of our parks, we've had a couple of subcommittee meetings where staff has presented possible locations, along with some cost estimates and servicing requirements. And the, the subcommittee has also provided their own recommendations and asked that we bring it back to the full Board of Directors here. So, today, our maintenance superintendent Stacy Fox has some information to provide, and will also be looking for some direction on, on, on this presentation, where he'd like to go. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, and community members. Appreciate the opportunity to present this evening on behalf of the Public Works Department regarding the ongoing discussion of portable restrooms, rentals, and services at our city parks, as well as the proposed placements of these facilities. To provide a little background, on September 24th, 2024, the Parks Recreation and Community Services Subcommittee met with then-Councilmember Alexander and Schwenk, and received an update on the construction awards of permanent restroom facilities at Long Canyon Creek Park and Vale Ranch Park. During that session, staff also presented an assessment of the suitability of portable restrooms at various park locations, including cost estimates and servicing requirements. The Subcommittee expressed concerns about placing restrooms in parks located within residential areas that lacked dedicated parking. However, they recommended the placement of portable restrooms at Serena Hills Park, Butterfield Stage Park, and directed staff to continue evaluating optimal locations for future consideration. Following that directive, the Subcommittee reconvened on June 17th, 2025, with Councilmembers Schwenk and Stewart. At that meeting, staff presented updated recommendations of portable restroom placements. The Subcommittee recommended placements at the following locations. That's Temecula Creek Park, Butterfield Stage Park, Serena Hills Park, and Marietta Creek Trail at the Winchester Road entrance. The placement of the four additional portable restrooms, fiscal impact is $5,952.64. These costs have been appropriated in the current year's annual budget. Tonight, we're seeking the council's input and direction on the proposed placements of the portable restrooms at the identified park sites. In closing, I'd like to, you know, that we are enhancing the restroom's access across all our parks, which is a vital step towards improving our overall experience for our park visitors and residents. We welcome your feedback and look forward to your guidance on how to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions of staff? Okay. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments? Okay, no public comments? All right. I gave you a look. All right, well, you're, you're good. Yeah. I know, that's why I was like, hey, maybe we're going to hear from you tonight. Thank you, Stacy. Any comments, questions, concerns? So, now we can move to, you know, Board of Director discussion on this item.
Just one question from my end. How were the sites chosen on which parks the public restaurants would go to?
So, we, we looked at our, all our parks in our city, and we looked at the parks without a restroom facility in it. So, then we also looked at those parks with like a parking lot as access, and, and the ones without those restrooms. And we can determine that those are the ideal sites to be able to place these portable restrooms versus our, what we consider like pocket parks or neighborhood parks, where, you know, they're usually typically next to residential homes or in small, small parks. So, so with that, we kind of picked those, those four sites that I went over, except for the trail. The three sites have existing parking lots. They're kind of our destination-type park, and they lack that facility. So, adding that portable there will really kind of close that gap on that need.
Makes total sense. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Anything else?
Yeah, no, I mean, we're on the Subcommittee, so we're obviously clearly like, we're supportive of this. And we did it, you know, threw the map on the table and started, you know, plugging around the city and plugging holes and trying to make it better for residents, so.
Mr. President, could I jump in real quick?
Of course.
Two things. Stacy, I know we talked about this, and I, but with council's consent this evening, can you talk about the timeline as far as the rollout? Because it sounds like it'd be fairly quick. And then, my two, my second part of my comment is, we did discuss permanent restroom facilities as part of our capital improvement program, and there's two that are in the pipeline. Those have become very, very expensive. And I think you guys had sticker shock when we started talking about that. We're going to get those two built and deployed and done, but in the interim, this is, this is a reasonable solution to sort of, you know, buy some time and sort of continue planning out as we build out our park system over, over time, too. So.
Yeah, as far as deployment, our, our vendor, Diamond Environmental Services, they're able to probably deploy them within a week of being asked to do. So, it shouldn't be a problem. And then, we are, we're excited about our permanent restroom facilities at Long Canyon and Vale Ranch, which are tentatively set for construction in January to begin construction, and hopefully around spring break time, those facilities will be open to the public.
Awesome. Thanks, Stacy. Okay, if there's no more questions or any concerns or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let us please vote. Thanks again, Stacy. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, and that item passes four to zero. Awesome. Thanks, everybody. We'll move to our Director of Community Services report. Any report this evening?
There's no report tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. General Manager, anything?
Nothing further tonight.
Board of Directors, anything? All right, seeing nothing, we'll adjourn to our next meeting. I will call to order our Temecula Public Financing Authority meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here, minus Director Ron. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? I will move on to our consent calendar. Item number 13, approve action minutes of July 22nd, 2025.
Move approval.
It's been moved, and second of the... And that motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to our Executive Director report.
Nothing further tonight.
Board of Directors report. I will adjourn our TPFA meeting. Our successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, there is no meeting. Our Temecula Housing Authority has no meeting. I will reconvene our Temecula City Council meeting, and move on to business item number 14, establish the General Plan Advisory Committee and authorize recruitment of members to serve on the same, at the request of Subcommittee members Kalfis and Ron. Can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we only have one public comment left, and that is on this item. Would you like to hear the public comment first?
Let's do that.
Laurel, that you are the public commenter. You have five minutes.
Welcome back, Ms. Lamont.
Thank you. So, I just want to say that this is great. Big fan of this committee, and getting public's input on this. I typically shoot from the hip, but I was not, I didn't see this on the agenda until the last minute, so I had to write something real quick. Our workforce, grocery clerks, servers, janitors, teachers cannot afford to live here. This forces long commutes, breaks community ties, and weakens our economy. If a job exists in Temecula, housing for that income level should exist here too. This G-PAC is more than a land-use exercise. It's a roadmap for Temecula's future. Housing, especially attainable workforce housing, is not a single chapter in that plan. It's the thread that connects the, our economy, transportation, safety, parks, and overall quality of life. Right now, too much of our affordable housing policy treats stability as temporary, something people are expected to graduate from, but without a clear path to attainable homeownership or long-term rental security, it's a revolving door. And every move means higher rent, another security deposit, and disrupted lives. That's not stability, that's churn. I'm a single mom. I work here. I raise my son here. My son went to school, well, technically in Marietta, but that's because we started out in Marietta. But we moved a lot. And all of my grocery and gas and all my money is spent here. So, all that 1% sales tax, I pay into that too. We pay into that. This is an important committee, and I hope you get a diverse amount of input. Because I don't want us to repeat mistakes and say, well, none of that staff is here, like we have been doing with Warehouse, you know? We weren't here. We didn't do that. We weren't the inspectors. We aren't, okay, well, we're here now. I want to learn from what we have, haven't done, or could have done better, and do better moving forward. And I hope with this General Plan Subcommittee, or is it a Subcommittee? This input from the community, I hope we take a diverse approach. And we evolve into letting everybody who works here also have the ability to live here. I am so, so, so grateful, especially as of recently. What, who I didn't get to thank was Matt Ron, and he's not a very prominent social media person. But I think he deserves a lot of recognition, because it does, he does a lot of work behind the scenes, and then he doesn't share it all over social media. But he's a big part of my ability to have access to somebody who is representing Warehouse, and all the work that needs to be done and, and reworked. So, thank you, Brendan and Matt, for bringing this to fruition. I mean, according to the agenda, you guys, that's, your two names are on it. So, I look forward- So I look forward to this. And I hope we do some good things for the local economic workforce, quality of life, and attainable homeownership moving forward. Because right now, affordable housing needs to be permanent until there is an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lamont. That being the last public comment, we will go back to our staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and provide the staff report. Okay, so tonight, we are here to speak with you about the General Plan Update Advisory Committee. So just briefly, and you'll know that at your workshop last week, this came up in that capacity as well, at your special workshop. So a quick overview of the item. The General Plan Update actually is quite a comprehensive and multi-phase process. It really is aimed at guiding the city's future development and quality of life. It looks at the city's long-term vision for land use, circulation, housing, public safety, parks and rec, and other really important aspects of the community. The process includes extensive public engagement. The city has hired a consulting firm, environmental review, and adoption by the local governing body. Tonight, we are before you because we are hopeful that the City Council will create a General Plan Advisory Committee. We're affectionately referring to this as our GPAC, consisting of 15 to 20 members of the community who live, work, and/or play in the city to assist in the efforts. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the recruitment information. Assuming it is approved tonight, the work of the GPAC will actually last approximately 12 to 18 months and the recruitment period will run for 30 days, August 15th through September 15th. I know with our annual Boards, Committees, and Commissions recruitments, we typically run a 60-day period. But with your permission tonight, we will go ahead and cut that period to 30 days and just do a really aggressive recruitment strategy to try to get you as many applicants as we can. The council will actually be looking to make its appointments at the September 23rd meeting. And then the term of each of the appointments will start immediately, October 1st, 2025, and it'll run through December 31st, 2026, unless determined otherwise. And when we say unless determined otherwise, what we mean is if their work isn't complete, then we'll extend the term for another three months or six months, however long it takes. But we're gonna start with this little over a calendar year. Next slide, please. All right, so while I am giving this staff report, please know that our Community Development Director, Matt Peters, and I have been working very closely on all of this. And so since this is, and also with the consultant as well, who is in the audience as well. And so if you have any technical questions of the GPAC's work itself, Matt is available to answer those questions. And then for the recruitment, I'm available. But we wanted to give you a big picture. This information that I'm gonna go over is also in the application and was attached to your agenda packet. So every applicant will know exactly what they are signing up for when they apply. So what is the charge of the GPAC? Essentially, they are going to be ensuring that city staff and the consultants are aware of and understand any sort of community concerns, values, expectations. They're gonna assist in identifying critical issues that should be addressed in the planning process. They're gonna identify areas of existing or potential conflicts and find ways to constructively resolve them. They're gonna capitalize on creative ideas and insights within the community for impact into the general plan. They're gonna keep community organizations and interested citizens informed about the status of the planning process. And then eventually, they're gonna provide final recommendations to the City Council supporting the general plan. And they will also be having a stop at the Planning Commission as well. Next slide, please. So who can apply for the GPAC? We want folks from various backgrounds. We want everybody and anybody, whether you live in Temecula, whether you work in Temecula, whether you play in Temecula, we want to hear from you. And applying for GPAC is one way to be heard. There's also gonna be stakeholder meetings and community outreach and other ways, but this GPAC is one way to serve and have your voice heard. People who have a genuine interest and connection to the Temecula community, residents, business owners, community leaders, property owners, those who work in Temecula, folks that are members of organizations that serve on the Temecula community. So any of our commissions that are sunsetting at the end of the year and that are interested in this work, we'd love for you to apply. Our nonprofit folks out there, you know, anybody else out there, they're all welcome to apply. Next slide, please. So here's what you need to know when you apply. Couple of things that you will be responsible for. First, know that the City Council will be appointing 15 to 20 members at the second meeting in September. The first GPAC meeting will likely occur in October 2025 and GPAC will meet approximately eight times through late 2026. All meetings will be publicly accessible, publicly noticed. They will be recorded. They will not be livestreamed, but they will be recorded so folks can go ahead and access those meetings after the fact as well. Those meetings will likely occur on the second Thursday in most months. Some months, there won't be a meeting. They will be in person, they'll likely be in the evenings at City Hall and they'll last approximately two to three hours. If this is bringing back some memories of QLMP and Blue Ribbon Committee, it should sound a little familiar. Members of the GPAC will receive agendas and reading materials via email prior to each meeting and will be expected to attend all meetings prepared to discuss the topics on the agenda. It is important to note that the reading materials may be in excess of 50 pages and from various resources. So you gotta be a reader, you gotta wanna be prepared before you show up for that meeting. Members are expected to provide a valid email address for communication purposes. All of the work will be done via email. So people will need to open up PDF documents, Word documents, be able to review all of that material before you show up to the meetings. And there will be no hard copies available, everything will be done electronically. Next slide, please. They will be, the meetings will be facilitated by our wonderful consultant team as well as city staff as roundtable discussions. It's all gonna be based on general consensus. When it gets to City Council, viewpoints are, multiple viewpoints are gonna be demonstrated and shown and shared with the council. There will be no roll call votes, so to speak. Members are expected to be open-minded and respectful and work with others to reach a common goal. They are expected to participate in all the meetings and provide impact and feedback on all the topics presented for discussion versus a single issue. They're also encouraged to attend as many of the community workshops as possible. I know there's gonna be a very heavy schedule for community development and the consultant to be out in the community to meet people where they are. So the GPAC members will be encouraged to attend those workshops as they are able to as well. And then lastly, the GPAC meetings are anticipated to follow the following structure. Address the following topics: Vision and Priorities, Land Use and Economic Development, Mobility, Land Use Alternatives, Infrastructure and Sustainability, Feedback on Draft General Plan, and then eventually it'll go back to Planning Commission and City Council. Next slide, please. So tonight, I want to give a quick little synopsis of last Thursday as well. We received general direction from the City Council to go ahead and proceed with the General Plan Advisory Committee establishment as needed. And then after the GPAC is done with their work, the GPAC will present certain recommendations. And it was the consensus, the general direction and consensus of the council at the workshop that any future standing task forces, Subcommittee's, Committees, Commissions would be based on the working agenda that would come out of those GPAC recommendations. So tonight, what we would like you to do is to go ahead and authorize the recruitment of the members to serve on the GPAC. We'd like you to go ahead and adopt the resolution of the City of Temecula establishing the GPAC. And then we would like you to provide any other direction as you deem appropriate related to the recruitment and/or appointment of the GPAC. With that, Mr. Mayor, I know Councilmember Ron, as one half of the Subcommittee, is not here, so I will send it back to you for your comments. And any questions, both Matt and I are here to help.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Any questions of staff from my colleagues? Councilmember Stewart.
So does a person applying for the GPAC have to be a Temecula resident? Okay, because I wanted to make sure that was clear because there are a lot of people who own businesses here in Temecula who are completely bought into Temecula and, you know, have ideas and thoughts on, you know, what can make Temecula better. So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, just in case anybody's out there thinking, I'm not a resident. Well, if you work here and you've got a vested interest, then yeah, apply. So.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of staff? All right, seeing none, move on to council discussion and/or a motion and a second.
Do you have one question as I'm just thinking, as we're processing this? When we're looking at the 15 to 20 people, are we gonna determine that as people are at podium? Or is that part of tonight, that I'm understanding that we're gonna pick how many people we want on that GPAC?
Yeah, so we put 15 to 20 in order to provide council some, a little bit of flexibility in regards to if we do not receive other direction from you, the appointments will be made in the same way that you make appointments to other Boards, Committees, and Commissions. So for example, hopefully you have 60 to 90 applications, that would be excellent. And then basically, we would do what we've done in the past where the mayor will facilitate perhaps, you know, a couple of names, three names from each of you as he's done in the past. And then we'll keep that tally and then we'll see if some names just kind of rise to the top there. And then, for any further discussion, council can go ahead and, you know, let us know. Let's say there's a gap in the, there's a top 10 and then there's a gap. Then you guys can have that discussion and we'll work it out during the discussion.
And is there an age requirement for this?
There is not. We did not note that there was a age requirement in the application itself. So.
Okay, I'm just thinking, you know, looking at the youth and college or, you know, who are we wanting to be able to get the vision from? And so I'm just trying to figure out, just let people know and have an idea of who can apply as well. Because I think for myself, you know, it's important that we have an understanding about the topics that are gonna be discussed. The reading you said, I think it was 50 pages plus or something around there, that that's the abilities, you're able to do that, plus be able to get on the internet and do those things. But also, I'm looking at youth, seniors, first responders, you know, people who have a really good also understanding of how the city works and operates. So I know for myself, and I think all of us can sit here and say, you know, it's like drinking from a couple of fire hoses when you first get in. So kind of at least having some type of knowledge when you're walking in the door does definitely give you a hand up, like a just little leg up on that. So just want to encourage people, all ages, all abilities to come out and let's see what we can do here.
Councilmember Swank.
Yeah, thanks. So I guess I did have a question because I don't, I wanted to just make sure. For the last General Plan Update, we didn't have like a committee like this. We did like charrettes, I want to say, or we did like community workshops and things like that. Is that a true statement?
Matt, that's my recollection. Do you, can you confirm that? That we did, we did charrettes, we did community engagement, we did a lot of workshops, but I'm not clear, we stood up a GPAC 20 years ago.
Yeah, I've been here 20 years, but the work that was done prior and then it was adopted in 2005, I do believe there was some sort of committee, as I recall, Larry Markham may have been on that committee. So it may not have been involved as many meetings as were proposing, but I do believe there was some sort of committee.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I was trying to find it and it shows in the, like, the community participation part, it talks about they did three workshops involving city staff and the public and it kind of seems like it was like this round table, kind of like, maybe if you knew the meeting was happening, you could be there, kind of thing. We did for Quality Life Master Plan though, we did like a Blue Ribbon Committee and there were 22 members, two councilmembers, five commissioners, and 16 members of the public. So as far as like if we want to talk about a number, like 20 is certainly not unreasonable of a number to have. And if you really want to have like a diverse perspective, I think we should probably land around that number. Especially if we're gonna have dedicated seats for certain organizations or nonprofits or, you know, maybe, I was just sort of thinking like if we did, you know, a portion of them for just like community members at large and then you had a separate section where it was like nonprofits or, you know, like Chamber VTV, kind of like those voices as well. But on the appointment side, I know our city clerk just mentioned like we would do kind of the top three. I would almost, I would argue that it would be if we really want a diverse group instead of building consensus, you know, because if you, if we're building consensus for one person, I don't know if we're gonna get a diver, like a fully diverse group whether, if we were to individually be able to appoint someone. Because I, my vision for diversity is gonna vary, right? And everyone's gonna say, you know, if we're trying to build consensus, I think we're gonna get a more homogeneous group. So my recommendation would be that, you know, each council member would get to a point, let's say two people, and then that would be 10. And then we could, if we're gonna do 20, we could open it up to like community groups, nonprofits, things like that. And then we could also do a consensus on five people or something like that. So you would get, I think you would get like a really, we would have to come to an agreement on some folks. You would get, you know, the folks that I have in mind, you would be like, you got that person, you know? And I like the idea of, you know, like people coming with knowledge. But I will say, some of the best thought comes from people that don't know anything. And they're not sort of bound by the norms and traditions and they just, they come in and they say, hey, this is what I think. Lene Trulie Trejo is a perfect example. I will say, I was a perfect example of that. I didn't know anything about it when I got appointed and I was starting to poke holes in things and that was healthy, that makes us grow. Iron sharpens iron, right? And so like I think, like if tonight is, part of tonight is figuring out a number and a process, that would be sort of my recommendation, 20. We get to appoint a couple each, we appoint some collectively and then there's some placeholders or sort of like a pool for nonprofits, community organizations, and business owners, kind of things like that. So that's kind of where my brain's at with it.
I like that idea.
Councilmember Stu.
Yeah, so, and I was gonna suggest we each get one pick. Just for this, the ability to have, like if we have an idea or something that we think and we want to get the feedback from this community group off of our idea, we have a mouthpiece that we can hand it off to and say, hey, can you suggest this? Or can you kind of push this kind of and see where it takes off? Because, you know, because we're gonna, we're gonna finally get it and it's gonna be kind of almost completely done by the time we get it. And we might make little tweaks to it here and there, but in the end, we want to do what the public wants, right? And so I think it would be better if we were able to get our ideas and our thoughts into this committee through a self-appointed pick. You know, someone who we can talk to and engage with and share our ideas so they can in turn share our ideas and/or their interpretations of our ideas to the group. So, because that would still give us five picks that, you know, we see as valuable to the group. And I don't know if we want to overload it with two picks. I think two picks might almost be too much council interference. Whereas one, I think we can really, we can get our ideas across, get it flushed out through the public thought process. And then it'll be good for us. And then we have someone who's personally responsible to us to come back and actually suggest, you know, well, this is what I got from them and, you know, this didn't fly or this, you know, so.
Councilman Stewart, if I could, and I don't know if this changes your opinion, but you don't necessarily need to employ someone to carry your message as a council member. And I would, because all five of you are likely gonna be interviewed by our consultants on some level or multiple levels, you're gonna have multiple. You're going to have multiple opportunities to share your individual, your respective viewpoints, opinions, so I just, I share that, because I know, I think that's part of the game plan. So, you don't necessarily need to appoint someone to carry water for you. You're, you're going to have plenty of opportunities as a council member.
Well, my thought wasn't necessarily to carry my water, but to, to have that viewpoint expressed in a public forum with all these other people who are going to be giving feedback, it, it would just be a better forum to get that feedback in this group of 15 or 20 than, you know, than just telling the consultant, "This is where I want to go, or this is what I think it should be done." Because I don't necessarily want my opinion necessarily, I want to hear what the public thinks about my opinion. And, you know, and I get it, that's called the vote, but, but the bottom line is, if, if I want to get feedback from multiple people, other than off of social media, which I don't think that's what this is, this is necessarily aimed at. This is more, you know, citizens that we trust, that we vetted, to give us their opinion on where we need to go in the next 20 years. And so, so that's, that's what I was thinking with that one hand pick, is being able to just have that interface with one person that understands me at a, at a cellular level, that can bring that to this group, and, you know, and I get to hear the feedback from them, is, you know, directly, so...
Completely your prerogative. I just wanted to make that statement, that this isn't your one and only chance to have your, have your message.
City Manager, if I can ask, how often would we be getting updates? What, what would that look like? So, that way, just meeting the needs of Councilmember Stu Stewart, that we would be getting the information out to us to be able to...
You, you know how we communicate daily, right?
Yeah.
So, probably very similar to how the Blue Ribbon Committee operated. There's minutes taken, there's, there's actions, there's, there's a record of the meeting, that, those, that record of those meetings, what was discussed, what was, you know, deliberated, topics. I would say, as soon as that's produced, that's shared with the full city council, that's shared with the professional staff. So, I see this council staying very engaged, very apprised for the entire 12-month process.
Yeah, I would also add that on the 23rd, when you make the appointments for the General Plan Advisory Committee, we're going to be bringing a public participation plan, which is going to outline all of the engagement and the updates to the city council, and also the role of the planning commission.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you very much.
No, I'll just say, Councilmember Stewart, I completely understand where you're coming from, but I have to say, and we've talked about this on the dais, that I adamantly disagree with direct council appointments of any commissioner. I think it has the potential to have optics that it is all about who you know and who's who, in order to get appointed to a commissioner's seat or a committee's seat, such as the G-PAC. And, you know, we, we've talked about this before again, but I think that, just for the things that you said, Councilmember Stewart, and the council interference, the personally responsible, the handpick selection of a, of a commissioner or a committee member, it has the potential to be viewed as lack of transparency, it has the potential to be viewed as we are handpicking this person to push our ideas in a committee that we're not necessarily in, and I would argue that it has the potential to lead to less diversity, because if, if I am choosing, I'm going to pick someone that I believe will make the best decisions, but what I believe may not be what my colleagues believe, and that is shown in us disagreeing right now on how the council should select appointments. That in itself, and that disagreement, is diverse. But again, the, this could be argued either way. I've adamantly disagreed with council appointments in the past, I will continue to adamantly disagree with handpicked selections. But I am just one vote.
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of add on to that. You know, I think, and I'd like to explain, you know, my thought process behind it. You can see a world, and, and I've lived in it, you know, where you get a bunch of qualified candidates, and I have an idea for someone that I want to get on there, but there's not consensus, right? So, you sort of, you get iced out, and that person, who's a really good person, and has really good ideas, doesn't get an opportunity to serve, because the people that get the opportunity to serve are the ones that are sort of build consensus between, everyone has to feel comfortable. Like, I want to appoint some people to make us feel a little uncomfortable, right? And so, you know, you can, you can say it's, it's handpicked, and it's, you know, it's, it's who you know, they still have to go through the process, but I think that flipside of us having to build consensus about that, it, it just gives us what, what we tend to get, and if you have a council with a three-person majority, well, one or two people on, on the losing end of that, that they sort of don't get their say, they don't get their version of diversity, or they don't get their version of something different. And so, yeah, I'm happy with one, if that's, you know, the, the will of the council. I think two's better, because we, because it is, you know, assuming we're at 20 people, you know, it's, it's a pretty big body, and there's, there's a lot of really good people out there, and I think, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we'll each be held individually accountable for. If you see someone, if you point someone, and they go to that meeting, and all they talk about is Cruz Knight and Rod Brun, we'll be like, "Well, Stu, what, what are you, what were you thinking?" You know? But if they're talking about building community and supporting businesses, and what is a community going to look like, we'll be like, "Great pick." You know, and so then, that's how we get held accountable, not necessarily like the, the optics of this, or the potential of that. It's, well, like, let's look at who we, who we, who we want to serve on there. And, and we all have a different vision, and we should all get an opportunity to fulfill that vision on something as important as a general plan, that's going to last a very, very long time.
No, absolutely, it makes total sense, and, and I see that perspective, again, but I just want to say that, you know, the, the way that we have right now, I would argue that our, our commissions are very diverse. You know, you mentioned that we get what we get currently, I think we have a very diverse commission base. But again, we, we can disagree, and, and that's okay, there's, there's no reason to argue continuously about this. I disagree with it, but I understand that there's a consensus on handpick selection. Mr. Peters?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, if someone doesn't get appointed to the G-PAC, or they can't commit to being on the G-PAC, we're also going to conduct stakeholder interviews. So, we'll take a list from the council members, and we can do those very specific interviews for those who aren't on the G-PAC.
How many are there for the stakeholders? What does that look like, total?
I'd have to take a look at the scope, but we'll conduct a lot of interviews.
Wonderful.
I'd say an additional 15 to 20 interviews.
Okay, thank you.
I think in the subcommittee meeting, it was mentioned, as much as needed stakeholders, as many as we need.
If I can ask one question, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Awesome. One of the things that I heard at the last meeting at the workshop, just so I can ask, and I just want to get clarity, if staff can help me, is it possible for an individual to serve on two bodies?
No, no, it is not. They would need to go ahead, and they can only serve on either the commission that they're serving on, or the G-PAC. So, but with some of the committee, the, some of the commissions that are sunsetting, some of them don't have upcoming meetings, and some of them have very few upcoming meetings. So, if they really have a passion for G-PAC-related topics and things like that, we would still encourage them to apply.
Thank you for answering that, wonderful.
All right, with that being said...
Can I get clarity, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely, yes, I was going to, before a motion is heard, I was going to have, it sounds like, one councilmember selected appointee, and if my colleagues want to make a motion to clarify exactly what else they would want to see on there?
I'll make a motion that city council gets one individual pick, basically a trump card, whatever you want to call it, so we have opportunity to have our own, and then, the rest through consensus at the dais.
Okay, and then, did you want to, like, have staff somehow identify particular seats affiliated with organizations? So, like, the chamber, the school district, you know, things like that?
I would like that, for sure.
Okay, so, maybe what we can do is, when the applications come in, we will work with community development to identify which of those applicants are affiliated with some key stakeholder groups, and when we give you the applications, we'll make that noted. So, what I hear for direction is five directly appointed members to the G-PAC, and the balance, which will be 10 to 15 members, will be general consensus with organizational affiliation noted.
I like that. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, but I just want, I just want clarification. So, the organizational side thing, because I'm looking at the Blue Ribbon Committee, and like, you can go down the list, there's 16, and they're like, all organizations. I'm just, I'm hopeful that when we get to that space where we're actually appointing, that it's not the same, or, you know, it's not the same as, like, the Blue Ribbon Committee that we just had, right? And so, like, we'll have to be mindful of, like, okay, well, we've, we've appointed several organizations, but there's 112,000 people that live here as well, and we can make sure that it's, like, has some balance, so we'll have to kind of hold each other accountable on that, and it's not just, you know, you know, "Oh, we, MSJC's on there," and, you know, you know, we want to make sure there are key stakeholders, but it isn't just the same.
Right.
Councilmember Schwank, if you want to make that a part of, like, some sort of an amended motion, we can definitely do that. If you, if, with five council direct appointments, we can do five direct organizational appointments, and then do five general appointments, or something to that effect.
Yeah, I would, I would actually like to see if you'd be willing to amend the motion, because I do think we should put some guardrails on it.
Yeah.
And if we did five direct, 10 at-large, and five community organizations for a total of 20, I think that would be, like, a pretty good balance for the community.
I agree. Just an important note, in the subcommittee, we did have a list of, you know, stakeholders, essentially, where we, I don't know where that list is, but there was about five or 10 businesses, and we said, "Hey, these have the possibility to be in it when we bring it to full, full council," but we also had a list that we could, that said, "They could be stakeholders." I don't know what happened to that list, but before we came here, there was a list of businesses and entities in Temecula that could be beneficial to the G-PAC.
We will note all of that. I know one of the lists that I got from community development had 40 entities on it, so obviously, we're going to have to do some sort of a method to the madness here, when we give you guys the application, but we commit as staff, speaking for both Matt and I, when we give you the, the applications, we will give you them, the, give you the applications in a way that makes sense for general appointments and organizational appointments.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
That has been moved and seconded. And that motion passes four to zero unanimously. All right, with that, what I say we do is, I, we will go to items for future city council agenda items. Any of my colleagues have anything? With that, we will move on to our city manager report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney Report?
Mr. Mayor, we, and members of the council, we had a closed session, and there are no reportable actions from the closed session.
Thank you very much. And while we wait, we have Little League and Temecula Valley Girls Softball Day here at City Hall. So, those tuning in on YouTube, all 17 of you, bear with us as we invite them in. Welcome in. Make sure you fill in all those seats.
Mr. Mayor, this is going to take a minute for them to all come in, so we'll just give it just a second here. Come on all the way to the front, you guys, all the way to the front, there's plenty of chairs. Make a friend, make a friend, if there's room by you, sit by somebody else.
Let's see. Let's do the list.
All right.
I feel like I'm at home, trying to rile, rile my kids up there. Well, first off, welcome, this is probably my favorite council day of the year. It's like Temecula Little League and Temecula Girls Softball at the Storm Stadium, it's kind of like that for Temecula. So, welcome, we are excited to have you all here. The way I want to do this tonight, since there are so many teams, we will first do the girls softball team, because ladies first, and then, we'll let the boys, we're going to do each team individually, so we'll start out with eight U, and we'll go all the way up, and then, after the presentation is over, if you guys are willing and able, we would love to have you all line up on the stairs outside City Hall for one group, massive group picture. So, after we're done here, and we do each award presentation individually, if you could all collectively go outside to the, in front of the City Hall with the city steps, we'll have our city photographer out there, and we'll have that. So, we're excited. Welcome, everyone, to Temecula City Hall Chambers. If you haven't been here, we are excited to have you and have you be here, you're already way quieter than you were about one minute ago. So, the way we'll do this, we'll have the Temecula Valley Girls Softball Association 10-U team come up to the podium here with your coaches, and I'll meet you down there. Does that sound good? You can all stand up and meet me at the podium.
All right, come on up, ladies. And while the mayor is coming down to the podium to meet you, I'm going to go ahead and read the certificate of recognition for you all. The City of Temecula congratulates the Temecula Valley Girls Softball Association's 10-and-under Gold All-Star Team for their outstanding season. Over the summer, the team played 51 games, finishing with a record of 37 wins and 14 losses. They were undefeated at the Eastern District Tournament in Rialto, ultimately taking home the championship title. Their performance earned them a spot in the Southern California State Championship, where they placed in the top six out of more than 40 teams. Also, they proudly represent Temecula at the USA Softball Western National Championship, where they competed against the best teams across the region. Out of the 34 teams, the 10-and-under Gold All-Star Team placed in the top four. The City of Temecula is proud of your dedication and wishes you continued success in your future endeavors. Ladies, congratulations!
That is pretty amazing. I'm sure some of my colleagues will have some words of congratulations for you. Mayor Proten, want to start us off?
Ladies, I just wanted to say congratulations. I just love being able to see your faces up here, and I'm sure all the hard work, I'm sure your parents are really, really proud of all of you, and I just want to just encourage you to continue to work hard and just never give up. So, thank you for all you guys do here.
Wonderful, wonderful job, ladies. I am just so proud of how you represent Temecula, and I know when you travel and when you win tournaments, you're repping Temecula in such a positive way, and just, like, just make us all proud. Good job, thanks.
Well, I think your shirt says it all. Temecula, you're all stars. Right? You, you guys are stars, so congratulations, good job, and keep it up.
We would love to hear from one of the coaches on the experience that you had, and whoever pulled the last straw has to, has to talk a little bit here. pulled the last straw has to, has to talk a little bit here.
Yeah, so this has been a long time in the making with this girls. This team has been together now for about a year and a half or so, and it's a lot of hard work and grind, and they just continue to get better and better and develop, and these girls love to be challenged. They love it, they demand it, actually. And it's just been so fun to watch their growth over the last year and a half now. And they definitely represented Temecula with pride, and so did the entire family, too. So it was just a really great experience for everybody.
Well, congra, congratulations, girls. You made Temecula proud. It's an honor to have you here. This is only beginning, right? Next year is maybe 10U again, All-Stars, maybe for some of you, 12U, All-Stars. The beginning of the journey. Congratulations. What we'll do is, we'll face that way, we'll take a big picture with all the coaches and, and team. That sound good? Congratulations, girls. And we'll do a big group shot at the end with all my colleagues out in front of City Hall.
All right, Mr. Mayor. Now that the ladies have been recognized for their success, it is time to recognize the young men. And we will start with the youngest of the young men. And please know, all of these pictures will be available on the city's Flickr, so you can probably go on there and a little bit of time and, and find those yourself, or if you want to shoot the city clerk's office an email, we'll be happy to send you the link. All right, so next up, Temecula Little League Baseball 8-and-under All-Star Team. Come on up! Welcome, welcome. Young men, youngest of the young men in the house. The City of Temecula congratulates the Temecula Little League Baseball 8-and-under All-Star Team for their first-place championship at the Future Stars Temescal Invitational Tournament. We proudly recognize the athletes' teamwork and talent, along with the dedication of their coaches and parents. The City of Temecula congratulates you, the entire team, the coaches, the parents, for an outstanding season, and wishes you continued success in your future endeavors. Way to go, youngest of the young men, 8-and-under.
Coach, we're going to call you up here first to have a few words.
That's okay, I came prepared this year. I, I had the honor of being here last year with the 8U boys as well, and I was caught off guard, so I, I wrote a little something. I just want to say how incredibly proud I am of our 8U boys. We didn't just win games, they made a statement at that tournament. It was hosted, as mentioned, up in Temescal Valley, north of us. I've had the opportunity to manage the 8U team two years in a row. I'm happy to report, we, I've, with the boys, won it two years in a row. We went undefeated in the tournament. In fact, we only allowed one run in the entire tournament, which is pretty awesome. These boys worked hard, had incredible coaches to help out. Dan Smith, Randy Martinez, not here is Diego Velasquez. I had my wonderful wife, Alicia, support us. They represented Temecula well, with great sportsmanship and pride, and they represented Temecula Little League really well, too. Nobody wanted to play us, that's for sure. Thank you, guys.
All right, I'll start out again. Gentlemen, I'm just so proud of you guys for all of your accomplishments and your hard work and dedication, and I just want to just make sure to let you know that you should be thanking your parents and your coaches. And I want to say thank you to the coaches and parents also for all the pouring in that you've done to these young men and the young ladies, because without you guys and your sweat and, and like continuous drive to get them where they need to be, they wouldn't be standing here today. So thank you to all of you, and thank you, gentlemen, for your hard work. Continue to do it.
Yeah, and my comments will likely be the same for everyone, as much like it was with the girls. It's like, I'm extremely proud of you boys and how you represent our city, and when you travel, you represent sportsmanship and what it means to be a winner, and growing into to young men, and, and being just wonderful, wonderful people in our community. So, and I've seen you all out there playing at times, and, and I can attest to that. You guys are really, really solid boys, so congratulations.
Yeah, I'm the same with everybody else. Congratulations, great job, and I'll tell you a little story about me. I was known as the strikeout king when I was in Little League, and it wasn't because I was a pitcher, so let's just, let's just say that. Okay, that's it. Congratulations.
That's pretty amazing. Congratulations, boys. I'm going to read out each of your names. I wish I had the softball list, I would have read out your names. I'll have to get that. But congratulations to all of you, it takes a team effort, but each of you individually, not only are you all blinged out in your necklaces, but you had to play well individually to win collectively. So congratulations to Austin Olson, Rafael Velasquez, Michael Perez, Daniel Gauz, Gabriel Smith, Cruz Raymond, Waylon Ham, Jackson Mora, Alessio Palazzo, Palazzo, I should know that he was on my team, Alessio, stud. We have Rion Martinez, Reed Avina, Cash Harris, and Jackson Richter. Congratulations.
All right, all right. Young men, 10-and-under, come on up!
Pile in front, keep piling in front.
All right. The City of Temecula congratulates the Temecula Little League Baseball 10-and-under All-Star Team for their first-place championship in District 28 and in Section 9. We proudly recognize your teamwork and talent, along with the dedication of your coaches and parents, and Temecula congratulates the entire team for an outstanding season and wishes you continued success in your future endeavors. Well done, 10-and-under Little League Baseball!
Coach, you have the spotlight again here. We'd love to hear from you.
All right, well, congratulations again, boys. I think I speak for the whole coaching staff when I say that we are honored, blessed, and thankful to be able to coach you guys. That goes for the parents as well. As a coaching staff, we demanded a lot, from practice to becoming better players on and off the field, and it was met. Every single milestone was met by you guys, and it really culminated in being one of the top 10, 10-year-old Little League teams in Southern California. So getting to compete at the state level with you guys, I think you guys are on a great road to success. You guys continue to put that dedication, that work in, that sportsmanship. You guys are an incredible group of youngsters, very proud and honored to have been able to coach you, and hope I speak for the coaches and I say just thank you to you guys and your families. Thank you.
Let's do it again, Mayor Protem.
All right, third time's a charm. All right, gentlemen, again, thank you guys for coming in, and you guys are setting the example for the younger crew. And so I just, again, want to encourage all of you gentlemen to continue to work hard and continue to give it everything you have, because you are being trained up and others are watching you. So just want to encourage, do not stop what you want to do as far as, if you have dreams and things that you want to be dedicated to, keep moving forward, and the hard work will, will get you through it. So thank you.
Yeah, so again, I'm extremely proud of you all, and, and you are Temecula's future. And when you are traveling, when you are playing, you are representing our cities, so I thank you. And as your coach mentioned, it is important to be good players off the field as well, and I think that's one of the things that I know coaches and parents and, and community members want to instill in you, and I know that you've got it in you to do that, and so keep doing what you're doing. Really proud of you.
I got two observations I want to give. First of all, I'm a barber, so I see all the baseball mullets going on. That's a real thing here in Temecula, by the way. But I'm, I'm curious about the Temecula X-Men. What's that all about? Oh, that's the name of the team? Oh, got it. That's perfect. That, so congratulations, you guys are awesome. Thank you.
Congratulations, boys. Each of you are going to get your name called. I hope I pronounced your last name right, there's some long ones on here. Kayden LaPage, Marco Velasquez, Christian Ramirez, Cameron Alto, Aaron Lucre, Ashton Barton, Grady Jenkinson, Jackson Miller, Bennett Ground, Grayson Fimisane, Amos Stewart, Fimasan, Amos Stewart, Jack Bland, Ellie Ramirez, Nixon Schlegenhaff. Are we pretty good? Not bad right there. Julian Stockdale, Lucas Bleke, and Sean Ramos. Congratulations, boys. Keep going. Congratulations, Coach. Thank you all for bearing with us as we go through all this. We'll face around here, we'll face the photographer, take one big picture. Teamwork continues after season.
All right. All right. We got three more to go. Hang in there, everyone, we got three more to go. Next up, we've got Temecula Little League Baseball 11-and-under All-Star Team. Come on up! Welcome, welcome. The City of Temecula congratulates the Temecula Little League Baseball 11-and-under All-Star Team for their first-place championship in District 28. We proudly recognize the athletes' teamwork and talent, along with the dedication of their coaches and parents. The City of Temecula congratulates the entire team for an outstanding season and wishes you continued success in your future endeavors. Way to go, 11-and-under!
I think I speak behalf, on behalf of all my colleagues here today, instead of doing this individually. Temecula is proud that you are here today, we're proud of you. You guys absolutely killed it this season. It's awesome to see you guys, not only here last year, some of you here back again this year. I see a coach up here again for the second time. This is amazing, and we would love to hear from one of the coaches on how the season went, how it ended, and...
First and foremost, thank you guys for having us today. This is awesome. To the boys, to the parents, thank you for all the time and commitment that you guys put in, all the hard work that you guys gave. I asked the boys, at the beginning of all of this, to give me one thing, and that was to just play as hard as they could, give me 110%. They did that throughout the entire time. Couldn't have asked for anything more. Great group of boys, way to represent Temecula Little League, but also the City of Temecula. Great job, boys.
Well said, Coach. Again, congratulations. Dennis Thompson, Nixon Zuniga, Tristan Wetten, Graham Richardson, Jack Fish, Josh Gomez, Chase Nolan, Camden Jones, Jackson Garing, Luke Briner, Colton Wood, Landon Jeremiah, Andrew Olson, Ollie Martinez, Finn Petrie, and Dustin Verdugo. Congratulations, guys.
All right. Well done, well done, boys. All right, 12-and-under, 12-and-under, come on up! 12-and-under! Welcome, welcome. The City of Temecula congratulates the Temecula Little League Baseball 12-and-under All-Star Team for their first-place championship in District 28. We proudly recognize the athletes' teamwork and talent, along with the dedication of their coaches and parents. The City of Temecula congratulates the team for an outstanding season and wishes them continued success in their future endeavors. Way to go, 12-and-under!
First and foremost, council, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, we appreciate the invitation every year. Staff, we appreciate you guys and your time in supporting the league. We have a new representative with us this year, supporting the league, so we appreciate you. James will be missed, so you've got some big shoes to wear. These are the best of the best of 1,200 kids. The last four years, we've had a significant growth. We had the opportunity to put all these teams together at the end of the year to, to represent Temecula. They are the best of the best within the league. They perform it on and off the field. We're extremely proud of them. These guys with me and, and each team that we have between 12 and 14 players, usually 14 players, just because we're such a big league, we try to get as much representation as we can. They all go out there, they all battle as hard as they possibly can, they put the Temecula Little League hat on. We change the uniforms up a little bit every year, just so it's a little different and something new and exciting for the guys. But overall, they go out there, they put blood, sweat, and tear. Right after season stops, actually, while season, postseason's still going within our interleague, they're actually starting their practices as All-Stars. So they're practicing every single day for three to four weeks, and their effort shows when we, we show up to the field. So we were able to host the All-Star Tournament at Temecula this year. All the other cities were absolutely jealous of how fantastic our, our fields were and facilities were. They loved the new snack bar, and, and they, they really enjoyed coming down to the fields and watching in Temecula. So thank you, city, we appreciate you guys. But players, hey, you guys are studs, every single one of you, okay? Never forget it, they always come out there, they do give their 110%. The coaching staff loves and appreciates you guys. Hope to see you everywhere we go, everywhere in town. And what are you supposed to say? Hi, Coach. Always say hi, Coach. All you players, when you see your coaches around for the rest of your life, say, hey, Coach. That's all we ask. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
While we're pulling up that sign up, Nicholas Hernandez, Logan Shafer, Hunter Wright, Kellen Compton, Joseph Perez, Jeffrey Fierro, Emerson Castle, Gabriel Acton, Nate Guiang, Wyatt Jordan, Finley Thompson, Cameron Duarte, Jensen Beerly, Kai Minami, and Eduardo Ramirez Jr. Congratulations, boys.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Okay, you guys, last, this is the last one. So, I want to hear you nice and loud. Last one. 50-70 intermediate team. Come on up. All right. The City of Temecula congratulates the Temecula Little League Baseball 50-70 intermediate team for their first place championship in District 28. We proudly recognize the athletes' teamwork and talent, along with the dedication of their coaches and parents. And the city congratulates the entire team for an outstanding season and wishes you continued success in your future endeavors. Way to go, 50-70 intermediate team.
Which coach draw the short straw here?
Boys, I just want to congratulate all of you on a job well done. Okay, you guys came together really quickly. You guys worked hard for us, you guys gelled. And you played incredible baseball in a short amount of time. You guys went undefeated in the District 28 Tournament, winning every game by nine or more runs. Okay, we mercied every single one of those games. You guys did a great job of lifting each other up and that was one of the things I was most proud of. You guys did a really good job of working together for a common goal. So, I just want to say congratulations, boys, and way to go. Good job.
Congratulations, Coach. We are proud of you. We're proud of you all. Like we said, keep up the hard work, keep going, keep grinding. Congratulations, Miles Bustos, Kaden Wallace, Chase Duncan, Owen Waylon, Declan Waylon, Trent Kurtz, Gary Casamento, Joseph Bram, Nelson Abreu, Brandon Baumia, Jackson Neho, Alfredo Enriquez, Liam Kay, Xavier Lizarga, and Dean Kokaya. Congratulations, boys. All right, everybody, that concludes our meeting here tonight. If you would be willing and able to go out to the front steps of City Hall, we would love to meet you out there, have one big group shot. We'll do the Temecula Valley Girls Softball Association in the front and then all the Little League boys on the steps in the back. We would love to have you out there. With that, I will have my Mayor Protem do the gavel and adjourn this meeting, please. We'll see you out there.